Your name.
Ma'am.
Please stand with me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions about the financial report? So. Receive a motion to accept.
I make the motion.
Second motion.
We got a motion second, all in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion fair.
Anything about the minutes, previous board minutes?
Save the motion.
Yeah, we got a motion second on that, all in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion fair.
Okay. We're gonna start to report to the public. Uh. Before I do, you know, we have a. Um. Gas problem at the preschool and they're gonna come in the morning and and fix a temporary. Uh. Fix to it for Thursday and Friday tomorrow, the preschool will probably depending on how cold it is, we're opening the doors of the other building rooms. They stayed in the classroom today, wasn't. They were, that's their decision. Tomorrow, if it's colder, they we're gonna put them in the library and a classroom and the gym and sort of let them do. If they choose to, if they choose to stay in the room, that that'd be Mrs. Whitson's decision. Uh, and then. Plan on them fixing it, starting working on it Monday, this coming Monday, so they'd get it done this week, next week while we're not in school. But basically, it's a steel pipe and that's not the code. And so in order to fix it, he's gonna have to go all the way from the school built, the other building, all the way down to it. Gonna be estimate of about fifteen thousand dollars. And that's if he. If he doesn't hit something or something doesn't happen, you know, you never know when you start digging in an old building. So, uh, anyway, that's an estimate. Um. The other thing I want you to vote on a little bit, uh, we can do it under other, you can do it now, but. Uh, I'd like to have an early out on December sixteenth at one thirty or one, either one. One o'clock's probably fine, but one thirty, whatever y'all want. Uh, basically semester tests are over about one. Uh, at the high school. Uh, pretty much won't be anybody there, and so kids are gonna sit and wait till three o'clock, the ones that ride a bus. Uh, and, uh, you know, anyway, I'd like to do that, but you, it would be a board vote to change the minutes. Uh, you can do it now or you can do it later.
I like the motion that we amend the minutes so we can address this situation now.
I'm sorry.
I was sending that to the president, I'll make the motion that we amend the minutes to be able to address this situation now.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, we got a motion second, all in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same side.
I make the motion that, uh, we let our early at one thirty on December the sixteenth.
Safety motion.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same side.
Okay, every year we have to do the report to the public, uh, and and so we'll have them come up. Uh, all the different entities and you should have in been emailed a list of, you know, of the. Uh, whatever it is, flat slideshow, so I'm gonna let Ms. Jones take over now and take off.
Alrighty, so, um, we just have a list of our board members that you want to hear. And again, a lot of this information, some of this information that you will receive will be also available on the high school info report. And grades, report card grades for schools in the district went out last week, so that has been made public. And, uh, these are the goals that you were presented with last week. If you choose to change it, that's something that you guys can discuss. And but these are the goals that we have set forth to, of course, remain accredited with the state. And to deliver quality professional development, to deliver strong instruction to address our learning gaps, to recruit and retain highly qualified instructional staff, to promote our family engagement. To prepare our kids for college and career ready, improve our graduation rates, our student attendance, keep everyone safe, and to upgrade any district facilities and technology. This is as of October one, now these numbers do change at times throughout, you know, the year, but this is our total enrollment as of October one.
Six oh four right now.
Yes, it is six oh four right now. Free and reduced lunch and all our percentages for our demographics. Our legal balances, which you guys are very familiar with.
If anybody has any questions, did we go harder?
Yes, please. And I'll answer, and if I can't, someone else can. This is what we have licensed staff and non-licensed staff. And we are all accredited. At this time, we are working towards this next year, oh gosh. Big dream, they had to come help me. This one? Yeah. Okay, for curriculum, we had a great discussion last week in our committee meeting regarding all of these, but you know, as a board, that we are still working hard at promoting our PLCs, our collaborative teamwork. Our IAFs gave a wonderful presentation last week regarding the work that they are doing on the campuses to improve instruction. And then, of course, as our district is under a targeted literacy plan, we are still working hard at small group instruction for K twelve. We are screening our students overall to see where we can fill in those gaps and help our students. And then the co-op is also coming in and working with our teachers and our administrators and our IAFs on specific targets in reading. This is our final testing calendar, it's just a broad calendar, and what we do is we fall within these areas and set our dates for state testing that we have coming up, and it goes throughout the year. And we have map testing that our high school, when we return from Thanksgiving break, they'll, they'll do their winter. A map test, and then we'll have middle schools, and then when we come back after the first of the year, um, primary school will do their state map testing, NWEA testing. And then we'll go into the ACT and ACT Aspire and everything just kind of flows from there. And if you ever have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any at all times.
So your testing dates are set already for ACT Aspire, I think we talked about that in the.
We have not set, set ACT Aspire as a campus or as a district, we can set those. And but we haven't set them officially, those are just the windows, the aspire.
I know we talked about, I think maybe last week too, or doing like making sure that everyone was aware of those dates so that we could avoid conflict of evening.
Yes.
Evening events so that our kids can be home and in bed.
Anything we can control.
Yes, yes. And hopefully we'll be able to take a hard look at that in the next month and and get some, some dates kind of narrowed down. But we do have that window that we use that we're required, we're required to get that testing done during those times. And the ACT is already set for February twenty eighth. And then we'll, we'll make sure that everybody knows about the ACT Aspires. For sure. Most definitely, good question and good reminder. Any questions?
Those are the slides you normally see in printouts from Rhonda and in sort of summary format from me. So this may look a little different to you, hopefully it's a little more user friendly. There we go, a little more user friendly. There we go. Uh, first, these are federal programs that are available in the state of Arkansas, uh, but I've used the strike through font on the ones that we specifically do not have, like, for example, Title III. Uh, that is, that is when you have a qualifying number of English language learners across your district. They kind of raise that bar and lower that bar periodically. So like, you know, this year it might be you have to have a hundred and thirty, the next year it might be you have to have a hundred and twenty five. So that's why if you talk with other districts and you're like, well, why does Center Point get Title III money and we don't? Well, it's because it's not a percentage of your student population, it is a, is a firm number, but they adjust that number each year. It's just, we don't reach that number. So, uh, that's one that's, that's got the strike through and then some of the others that we've had at different times. Uh, but again, this is a, just kind of a quick overview of those federal programs available in Arkansas. And, uh, this is always a requirement, have to remind everybody that there is a process for if you, uh, think that there's any kind of fraud, malfeasance, uh, any sort of mishandling, we have to be sure to notify folks of, uh, of their options on that as far as reporting. Okay, so, uh. We have, basically, we have, uh, eight funds that we're looking at, uh, with respect to Title I, or excuse me, with respect to federal funds. Um, with our Title I being sort of the flagship of that most, most years. So this is again, information that you've seen along the way. Uh, then our Title II is a much smaller pot, and so because of that, we can't do a whole lot with this, but we have other funds that can do the same things. So we actually transferred this over to our Title I pot to make it a little bit larger. And as I said, we don't get Title III, so. Currently, and we also do the same thing with Title IV, because again, this would not really cover very much. So we move this money over as well, and some of the things that would be permissible under Title IV, uh, like, okay, for example, uh, if we were gonna upgrade our, our security and things like that, the cameras and all those types of things, some of the things that we've done over the last few years, SROs, these are different things that some districts may do with this, we couldn't cover, you know, it's like, let's buy a door with this. So we can't really, so instead of doing that, we move this over to Title I, and then we use other funds to, to take care of some of those needs. And then we also get Title V, which has two different versions, and, uh, most people, I think, in, in, uh, in our circles will call this REAP. Uh, it's, it's associated with rural education, it's the idea that. If you're a, a good distance away from, uh, from a commercial center, if you don't have a lot of industry, then you probably need some help, uh, making up, uh, some of those, some of those, uh, resources that your district may not have easily or readily available for your students. So we basically take this pot, split it three ways, and then use it, uh, at our, at our three campuses. So those are our typical federal funds that we had most years, and then right now, of course, we're also dealing with the three ESRs. Uh, we have the original ESR, which is completely done, Shing, that one's, uh, been obligated, it had to be obligated, uh, by September thirtieth, and we had spent all of that. And then, uh, ESR two, which has to be obligated by September thirtieth of next year. And, uh, we have, we still have a little bit of that was pending, uh, waiting on, you know, again, that whole federal, we have to spend it, then the, then the state people review it, and then they decide, yeah, that was okay by the rules, or we need more documentation or whatever, and then they reimburse us. So we're still in that phase on this last one thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars. Uh, and then that will be, in fact, they may be working on that this week, uh, because, uh, because they would have done the data pool last, last Saturday. So once that's clear, then we'll be finished with ESR two. And the only other one that we're still dealing with from the pandemic funds will be ARP ESR, originally called ESR three. And those are, those have to be obligated by September thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, but of course, we had to go back to the drawing board August twelfth, uh, and, and look at the recommendations from the July twenty-second, uh, committee. Uh, uh, recommendations from the legislature, and so that's, that's revamped our budget. And so some of the things that we thought we would be doing out through potentially twenty twenty-four, we won't have those funds available. But, uh, we did get those bonuses out also last week, uh, so that that way we could, uh, we could get that reimbursement, uh, hopefully in this month. So I think those are all of those, should be all eight of them, yep. So any questions about these?
That cleared.
I did not go to school to be an accountant, so unfortunately I work with one, so she can handle it.
So what I did for our report to the public is I just kind of outlined the disabilities and the total number of students that we serve. Right now, we're at eighty-nine total students that we've served in special ed. Um, that number will increase because we're in the middle of doing some evaluations for new referrals and we, for speech and for academic services. Across here, we serve students with autism, multiple disabilities, other health impairment. This could be a syndrome that they have, they could be ADHD or ADD or something along those lines. Um, specific learning disability in reading and math, hearing impaired, intellectually disabled, speech impairment and traumatic brain injury. And you can look across, and it has primary school, middle school, and the different types of disabilities in the total number per building.
Feel free to stop and ask questions.
Right.
Because you, you.
I mean, I'll just rattle this stuff off.
You gotta need to learn.
I'm seeing like maybe thirteen percent of our students.
Yes, sir, we are over ten percent.
What you're seeing across different districts or.
We, we are at the lower end, um, of most districts our size, but it is still a good, more than I would like to see of our total population. Um, but yes, we're not out of line, we are not out.
Can you, can you give some examples of that specific learning disability?
Specific learning disability, we, we test in subcategories such as reading expression, basic reading skills, reading comprehension, listening comprehension, math calculation, math applied facts, and math problem solving. And depending on the scores from our test, we do, um, comprehensive. We do what with the Woodcock Johnson, the Woodcock Johnson four is what we use here in district. We do achievement, and then we, achievement is where we test for reading, writing, and arithmetic is what I tell everybody. And then we do cognitive testing. We back up that achievement testing with another secondary test for reading and a secondary for writing and math. This specific learning disability, most of our children are, are our students are reading and math. Very few do we have that are in reading or math, most of their time they're in both areas. More questions about that? So when I was sitting down to do this, I wanted to take a step back and look at what I wanted to focus on to support my district and to support my staff. Um, we wanna locate and serve students with disabilities according to the child fund procedures. Um, we want, if there is a child that is with a suspected disability, we need to know about that, whether we serve them. We, as in, our district serves preschool, but the co-op actually does those services for us. But we still are responsible for those students that are within our district bound, boundaries. Currently, our population is fourteen point five nine when we look at our total population. Um, it's being served with educational, an IEP, an individualized education plan and special education. All students identified with a disability have access to the general education curriculum and are provided a free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. I know that's a lot of acronyms and a lot of verbiage, but basically what that's saying is that we include our, our students in the general ed population first, and then we look at their individual needs, and then that's when we start coming back and seeing how we can serve them better to meet their needs. We wanna meet their needs at where they are. We, the state, I don't know if you've heard, but the state is more, moving to a more inclusive practice. That doesn't mean that we're all gonna dive in and they're all gonna go into general ed at one time. This means that we're gonna look more deeper into their IEPs and see how we can expose them to the general ed curriculum first.
Question. I'm looking at your fourteen point five nine, what numbers did you use?
I used the total when I.
Are you using six oh four or something else?
I use six ten. Because the, the time that I did my numbers was different from this, it's six ten divided, eighty-nine divided by six ten.
I'm just saying, because if somebody looked at that report and they see six oh four, and they see eighty-nine and six oh four, they gonna get like fourteen point seven something. What, what happened, what happened is at the end of the first quarters, when your, your average, and then you know, you got four, four quarters, and so they're working out that first quarter average. Yeah, I'm saying, I'm seeing a public, and the public is looking at this, and they look at this slide, and they look at her slides, I just wanna make sure.
Placement and the individual needs of students are determined based on data and pit, and input from teachers and parents. Recruitment and retention of qualified teachers and paraprofessionals is our goal. Employment for juniors and seniors through the work-based learning opportunities leading to future employment program. We have a program in place that our juniors and our seniors are working through the Wolf program, and they are earning money and working here in the district. Uh, we have one success story, one student that graduated last year is now employed in our cafeteria through the skills and things that she learned through this Wolf program. So I was real excited about that. We plan on expanding on that program and, and seeing where we can go with it. Somebody have any questions?
You were saying that you're looking for many ways that you can incorporate. Where the students might can go back into, under a general curriculum. Have, have you got some examples of what you found compared with the teachers?
Yes, sir, what we look at is every student in our district is general ed first. Then, depending on the deficits that are proven to us through testing, we, um, we look at their individual needs. Say, we've got a student and they are showing a specific learning disability. Well, the teachers may say, well, I really think that they're showing characteristics of dyslexia. So we'll dig a little deeper and we'll see if that reading needs to actually be dyslexia interventions, which are, IAFs are providing more detailed and more interventions to our students. Some of our students are just right there at the age of not being with their peers. So we may provide them more of that tier three intervention, the small group interventions that the teachers provide, and some of the paraprofessionals supplement so that they're in there with their general ed peers and not being pulled out to a resource classroom. So we're trying to, trying to incorporate that more.
Have you seen much of a, a child with a IEP? Get advanced enough that they don't no longer need.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It, it's very seldom, but our goal is, is that that IEP is to bridge the gap in the learning and not for those students to stay there. Um, Ms. Gentry's policy is, is that we test in primary school, and then we test again in, uh, middle school. And we're looking for how that has increased and improved over the years. And when I say test, I don't mean just the NWEA, I mean that comprehensive testing that we do to prove that they need, need an IEP. We wanna see where that growth is going and if they can do that. A lot of times you see that discharge from special ed is when, in speech. Speech is one of the easier when they have met their goals, or they don't qualify through testing through their speech, their, for their speech therapy. Those are good questions, thank you.
Can you go back to that slide that had the numbers on there that's? Yeah. So how, can you say how many, you mentioned dyslexia, how many, do you know how many of those students in primary or middle school are affected by dyslexia?
We, right now, we are, I would say about five percent of my population that is labeled, uh, SLD or specific learning disability. That's a very fine line, because dyslexia could also be determined as being a specific learning disability in reading. They have to meet those characteristics for dyslexia. There's three, I believe, I'm not, I'm not the dyslexia specialist, but we do a lot of collaboration. And they, the IQ scores have to be sufficient enough to do that intervention for the tape plot. Tape plot curriculum. However, there is another program that if they don't meet those criteria, that we, what is the one, other one that starts with a B? Braylon? But thank you, that we, we move them into to receive those dyslexia interventions. We even have some students that are not dyslexic that are receiving those interventions to help improve those gaps.
You may have answered this question already, I might have missed it, but who, who does the testing specifically for dyslexia?
Uh, Ms. Collins and myself. I will do the reading because part of the reading that, that I do, she uses for her testing so that we don't retest the students so much, we'll use each other's testing. Those are great questions. Any more?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, these are, um, the numbers for each grade level that we have throughout our district. And, um, this year, instead of just giving you, let out what we've studied and what we've done, I kind of set some, uh, goals for the GT program for you to see. Some of them may look a little suspicious, especially this one. Creating the fear into the failure for our students, because sometimes students, especially if they get in GT in third or fourth grade, they have been early readers, they have been the kids who get their work done first and just wanna turn it in as quickly as they can because they wanna say to everybody that they are the best at whatever they're doing. And so a lot of times, they don't know how to fail and recover from mistakes. And, um, sometimes that also shows up in their work ethic, they just wanna be finished, they don't wanna be doing work that is actually good or improving on where they started. So I like to do that, sometimes it's part of those kids when, you know, I'm like, that's, is that the best you can do? I don't want to see what she can do, be the first at, I just want you to go back and let's look at it again. And sometimes they get frustrated with that, but that's also working on that grit, that grit, that work ethic grit. Trying to, trying to stick with it and, um, not just get finished and be done. Um. When we're looking at GT kids, we always wanna look at things that they're already showing us through their achievement, through their classwork, through their outside interests. But we also wanna look at things that a kid may have as a talent or a special interest, but they're not showing any of their teachers or their parents, or maybe their art teacher might keep a glimpse of it, or somebody in the library might say, oh, this kid checked this book out, that was way above their level, so you may wanna check them out. Um, a lot of times, students especially are very good students, the ones who, you know, they're not a behavior issue, they're just quiet, they're not rights in their hand to tell you to answer all the time. Those kids, a lot of times, that are not outspoken, sometimes show up as a hidden talent or somebody that has a lot of, um, hidden potential that we wanna pull out. Um. This one right here, expanding horizons for students, I don't want them to think that the world drops off at the Clark County line. I want them to see things that, um, you know, potentially could be part of their work experience as an adult. Or if they're not going on vacations with their family, let's talk about things they could do. We, um, I always wanna push for students to strive to be on a team or on a, in an activity where they can actually go to competitions that are out of the district, out of the state. Um, we got to do that last year when we went to New Orleans. It was so fun because those kids, a lot of them had not been out of the county, and they were amazed. Just the vastness of the city, um, when we were coming into New Orleans, and they're like, oh, gosh, look at all, you know, the roads, all the buildings. Um, and then taking them to eat, that was just, I just sat back and laughed because they, they were ordering whatever they want at the, at the beginning of the trip. They were just like, I want chicken nuggets and french fries, and by the end of, end of the trip. They were just like, I want chicken nuggets and french fries. And by the end of, end of the trip, they were like, give me some red fish and alligator tail, I want it all. We always wanna help our kids do their best, um, going into the secondary, I'm just telling you, secondary options. Um, you know, college is not for everybody. College is for the people that want to advance that higher education degree, but we need kids who are interested in being productive citizens of our community, and that's what I really strive for. And I wanna make sure that everybody knows what we're doing in our program. And if there's ever any questions about how students are identified or recommended for G T, please email me or ask me. Um, I hope that other teachers would know that. I try to um, make sure teachers know about that, but we have a high turnover, so I'm trying to, that's hard to kinda keep up with sometimes. Um, and also make sure that we are aware with the State Department. And I just got that email last week, I was looking at it before, which is really early because usually it's not till April or May, but we are good to go on that. These are um, some of the things that G T kids are involved in. Haven't done a plan a while because of COVID, but we're working on that. Um, performances and public speaking, we have our third and fourth graders are being involved in the Turkey Day celebration at primary school on Thursday. Some of them are very nervous because it's their first time, but always encouraging them to get out there and try it. Uh, public speaking, whenever we go to a tournament or somewhere where they have to actually order a, order their food or talk to an adult that they don't know, I make them do it. Because that is part of interaction, act, interaction with other people that they don't know. Um, it's gra- you know, grasping those communication skills, all those things that I want my kids to be able to do. And then the travel. We work a lot on affective needs and that's, you know, social motion, and of social emotional learning. Um, one of the problems that people sometimes see with students who are high-level thinkers is a lot of depression, um, sometimes a lot of dropout. Sometimes kids are really, uh, I'm not challenged in school. Nobody ever talks to me, they think I should know everything and nobody cares when I don't know something. So we talk about how to cope with that, how to ask for help, even if you're assumed to be the smartest kid in the class. Everybody's can learn something every day. I say, if you don't learn something, come see me, you will learn something. You're, I'm gonna teach you something if it's a random fact or uh, the song lyrics or something from nineteen seventy-two, we're gonna learn something new every day. And everybody should feel like they can come to school and learn something, even the teachers. Um, some of our students need more higher level content and learning opportunities, and we have that, we're so thankful. That was one of the things that was glad about on the um, State Department program approval option was that our eighth graders are still able to take algebra one and therefore move on up into the higher level math when they get to high school. Any questions on that?
With us being from a small district, everybody kind of knows everybody. You, you kinda touched on it, uh, does a child get a reputation for being a A student?
Yes.
And then they might put out some standard work, but it still gets to be A because Suzie is an A student. Is that a problem? Do you see that?
Right now, I'm seeing the opposite. Right now, I'm seeing, oh, I'm an A student, so I have to try, try as hard, or I don't have, whatever I turn in will be good enough. So I'm really working on apathy, um, and making sure that my students, when, when they're given an assignment, that they go above and beyond what's required and actually try to do something that nobody else is doing, you know, using some of those brainstorming techniques. Um, thinking about things that are outside the box, thinking about uh, ways that they can improve on what they've done yesterday or the day before. It's, there's a lot of work ethic issues that we try to work on. Um, but by and large, we have a lot of kids, we have a lot of kids across the district who are not in, identified as G T yet, or um, just by happenstance that that are really, really hard workers and really, really putting forth a lot of effort.
I just remember when I was in college, some of the smartest people that come from all over and they were A students, where they come from. They didn't know how to study.
Cause you had been studying the whole time. Yeah, that's a problem.
That was a big problem for them, if they never learned how to study.
That's that, where we're, a lot of our teachers are teaching at rigor, teaching above the point of learning where they are, so that's a really, um, that's something that I know everybody works on all the time. And that's, I mean, that's a goal for every teacher, that we do that.
So I think I've made everyone, I'm Kim Riley, I'm the elementary interim principal this year, so go ahead and get busy. These are numbers based on last year, on enrollment last year, it was two hundred and seventeen first students. And this was based on last year, so our class sizes kind of fluctuated and changed because, you know, we had students promoted. We have three kindergarten this year, two first grade, three second grade. And we have two classes in each third and fourth grade this year. Okay, so here's our statistics based on last year. English language learners were fifteen percent, our percentage of students that were low income was seventy percent. And students receiving special education services out of our population was twenty percent. And that's probably, I mean, that number looks high, but we have the most students at our campus who have speech on language impairments. And so that's probably why that percentage is higher, because as the students get older, you know, they, they get those sounds and they are able to articulate them better and they pick up the language and they are dismissed from speech on language as they get older, so. Any questions so far? Okay, so for our two thousand and twenty-two grade, we gotta see, which we're excited about because we actually moved up from a D. So we're celebrating our campus, we're taking every celebration, we can get every growth. Yes, and we.
To make sure you mentioned what you just found out this week.
I did. We found out that primary school has been named one of the schools moving towards success in the state of Arkansas for twenty twenty-two. So we're really excited about that because the state has recognized the growth that we've made and the students' achievement that they've made, so that's a big celebration. I pass the word along to my teachers and staff and they're excited about it. Okay, so this is our subpopulation, their performance broken down on the A C T assessment, and we're really excited because of our subpopulation, the African-American group. So the state average was at fifty-eight, but for our campus, the score was seventy-two, so we that population on our campus far exceeded the state average, so that was exciting. And you can see how close the other sub, subpopulations are as well, so. This chart kinda shows the difference between our performance and the state average. So the yellow is the state and the purple is us, and you see, we're close to the state average. The biggest gap for third grade was in science, but then the rest of them were close. English has come a long way, was still making strides towards math. So we've got some help set up for the rest of the year through working with the instructional specialists at Dawson coming in and working with third and fourth grade teachers on that. And we've also set up some time during the summer to get training from them as well for our, our P L C town, P L C teams that's focused on math. Fourth grade, you can see how the, the gaps even smaller for all the subjects, English, math, science, reading, and Ella. And I know we talked about before, you know, how much reading comprehension plays a big role in all the subjects, and so looking at our reading, you know, we outscored the state. And so that plays a big factor in how our students perform in the other areas as well. Any questions? This data is based on the A C T and it shows the exact percentage of the students in each area that they scored for each subject. And so over on this side, this is the numbers that we always look towards, the percentage of students who met benchmark. So for my we round up to thirty-eight, uh, fourth grade, thirty-two percent met benchmark. In English, fifty-five in third grade and sixty-five in fourth grade and science. Of course, you know, you saw the chart, so you understand that gap, but in fourth grade, they were a lot closer to every batch. And then reading and Ella. We also look at the data that we get from the N, N W E A, we give that three times a year. And so that helps us get a measure of the progress that the students are making from kindergarten to second grade. And so that it shows reading and math, but when you look at it throughout the whole year, you can see the growth. And so that's big, a big part of why our grade went up is because of the growth that our students made. You know, we're still below state average in some areas and we're still working to improve that and putting interventions in place in all of our subjects. But the growth that the students made compared to twenty-one to twenty-two is a big part of why our school grade went up. Any questions so far? So, celebrating some of our strengths, as I men- mentioned before, our subpopulation of African-American students, they scored way higher than the state average, so that was a celebration. The growth in our N W E A data. We've got teachers and staff working with the specialists from Dawson and I Fs. And they're working in the peers, P L C teams focusing on the rigor and increasing the rigor for the students on assessments and then within the instruction. We're excited about it. We're excited that we're continuing capturing kids' hearts and we're trying to really refresh that program and find ways that we can reengage it with students. And part of that's been through the social contract. Each class has one of those that the students, the students create it with their teacher. And when I see students, I have the same social contracts in my office because I took pictures of them. And we go back and we refer back to our social contracts and we brought them hanging in the hallway, so they're referred to consistently throughout the day. We've got a really good rapport built at Girdon Primary. Two main words I would use to describe it are just a a culture of empathy and respect between the students and the staff, staff with other staff members and we're working on the students having respect with each other, you know, and, you know, our students are a lot longer than middle school and high school younger. And so they're still working on how to handle conflict with one another, and so that's a big, um, that's a big skill that we're working with them on and we're working with Ms. Kinsor, our counselor, and using our strategies and C K H. Exciting news. Um, we are in the process of, we've received a recycling grant, so we're getting bins for our campus for cardboard and cans and paper. So the kids are gonna get to do that hands-on as well as constructing a greenhouse. Mistress Fagans was the one who um, got that grant started and we were rewarded that grant. And so we're getting it implemented now and we're working with the East group and they're gonna come over and construct it and our students are gonna be digging in dirt in the spring, so we're excited. So to address our weaknesses, you know, to continue making growth and continue increasing our achievement scores, we've got interventions taking place in the tape plot program for students who are showing signs of dyslexia, and that's our I Fs. And our instructional coach, Ms. Rod, instructional coach, Ms. Collins and Ms. Rogers, who is leading up the E S L instruction on our campus. Our activity teachers have also been doing interventions and so they are trained in the Barton Program, which is an additional literary literacy intervention curriculum that the students will benefit in front of smart groups and one-on-one. Teachers are using Step Up to Writing for that curriculum and that focus. Throughout the whole campus, and so it's gonna be consistent K for the, the language that they hear and the skills that they're learning, how to organize their thoughts. And we need to write more. That's one of the things that we saw from our testing that is we need to have the students writing more. They're doing good in English, but just put in their thoughts, um, thoughts together, you know, and being able to write about what they read needs to be strengthened. We're re-engaging the, our teacher support system, and that's through coaching and that's through modeling with our I Fs. And we're having the specialists come in and one thing they do is they'll observe or model, and then they offer us feedback and support so we can see where we need to grow at and where we need to strengthen. And we're also building relationships within our community. Um, a collabor- collaboration committee's been set up and we had our first meeting last week and it went really good and I had several, I had a couple of who attended and I had several more who emailed me and called and they weren't able to make it, but they're excited about the next meeting and they said to sign them up for whatever we need, so we're excited. Any questions?
I use Thursday mornings, the old, is that a public thing or?
We do. Thursday morning at nine A M, we're gonna have a Thanksgiving program at the gym. And so every grade is gonna sing, they have some songs together, and then we're also having G T D A R presentation for us, so we're excited. I think the community members are excited to come and also.
If you'd like to come, it'd be good.
Yep. This Thursday, nine A M in the gym, yeah.
About lunch, do they get to eat lunch today?
We are serving the Thanksgiving meal on Thursday. So it's gonna be, you know, they, they make the best roll.
Alright, good evening everyone, I'm Mrs. Blacknall, principal at Kate Middle School. And we pretty much familiar with some of the numbers already, but I'll go back over them. Um, here's our population, we have about sixteen licensed um, professionals, five pair professionals and four other non-licensed. We actually have one sixty-seven students. I looked just a while ago, it's like we lost one. So our, our enrollment is actually steady declining, which, which is not good. About forty-eight in the fifth grade, um, forty-eight in the sixth grade, thirty-one in seventh grade, forty-one in eighth grade, that's what our population was. This is what our school grade looks like. So you can see on the chart, our state average is sixty-six point eighty-eight. We're at a fifty-nine point nineteen, so we are significantly low, um, but in the, in the D range. Um, our goal is to get in the B range. We're gonna talk about how we're gonna do that here in a little bit. Alright, so demographic breakdown, we got about fifty percent uh, white, uh, nineteen percent Hispanic, twenty-eight percent African-American, and uh, seventeen percent of our students receive special education. And we are low-income percentage is seventy-eight percent. And uh, looking at this chart, you can tell that we're below the state average in every category. The closest category to median state average is special education, uh, followed by the Hispanic uh, population in our subgroups. So we have a lot of work to do. And uh, here are our A C T Aspire scores for last year. Now, it did not include N W E A, but I will look in, um, but you'll see a similar uh, trend in data even with those numbers as well. Uh, looking at math, um, we had eighteen percent in fifth grade meet benchmarks. At sixth grade, we had twenty percent, seventh grade, we had eleven, eighth grade, we had sixteen percent meet benchmarks in math. And basically what that means is just they're ready, that group is ready and exceeding, um, is what's covered under median benchmarks. What we do well in is English. Uh, we actually have fewer that are in need of support and way more that are ready and exceeding in English, so we do really well in that. And actually, our seventh grade, seventy percent of those students met benchmark, eighth grade, sixty percent met benchmark. Uh, English is our highest area that we score in. And it gets worse after that. So uh, science is pretty low, um, and need a support for, for all grades. And um, we got a lot of work to do if you, when you look at the numbers. Looking at our reading is what we have a heavy emphasis on now. Twenty percent in fifth grade met benchmark, twenty-three in sixth grade, twenty-seven in seventh grade and thirty-four in eighth grade. So our opportunities of growth, just like every other school in the state around the country, we are trying to recover from learning loss. So we know that so much learning was lost over the pandemic and we're still struggling to make sure that we get our students back on track. Uh, attendance is very important. They have to be at school to learn. And so it's, uh, there's been a struggle with attendance and also uh, for our staff to have, uh, that are struggling going through sickness and illness and flu season, we have to be there to teach them. So attendance is something that's an opportunity for growth for us. Community partnerships, we would like to be more involved with the community. We want more of your support uh, to help us do the things we do. We are open to uh, volunteers and we are open to donations. And um, I would like to get more volunteers in our building to work with our students. So that's a goal moving forward. Uh, performance on state assessments and like we talked about over and over again, reading comprehension is an opportunity for growth for us. The main emphasis is, is effort, and we've talked about that before, and uh, rigor as well. Our strength is, we have exceptional teachers who utilize resources to provide quality instruction. So our strength is our teachers and our students. So we have a good group of students, we have a good group, group of teachers as well. Um, when we look at the things and we go to the trainings and they say what all teachers need to be doing to educate students, we're doing most of those things. We have teachers that's come early, stay late, they're asking the higher level questions, they're doing the things that, that are necessary. Also, we have P L C collaboration where all of our core teachers, I have a common planning period to work on, to look at data. I have a common planning period to work on, to look at data and design instruction based on the data that that they look at. And also to design a common formative assessments. That's how our master schedule is developed. Inside our master schedule, we also have R T I. Every day for students, uh so if a student is struggling in one area. Uh, they have an intervention after lunch to help them to get the skill that they need to be successful in that area. We talked about captioning kids' hearts before, uh captioning kids' hearts is is really the first step in our disciplinary plan. To make sure that uh we are asking those four important questions to make sure students are on task. What we do well also, we have order and supervision. Uh, school runs really efficiently. Our teachers are always on their post and always following through, not only with captioning K S Rs, but also our procedures. Our handbook and our disciplinary procedures as well. And we have incentives based on academic achievement, effort and behavior. Um, I just uh put out one, we have an incentive, our talent show, I want to welcome everyone to come to our talent show that we have on December fourteenth. In order to go to the talent show, you have to have a certain amount of A R points. We gave a low number, we had five A R points and A R is accelerated reading, so. In order to do the different incentives that we have, you gotta work for it. We just don't give out things, we have, we have to work for it. Another thing that we're gonna be doing moving forward is homework, um, and we have a homework incentive as well that we're gonna be doing uh next semester as well. We are consistent and we also have support through Dawson and A D E, so. We have a lot of good things that we're doing and I think that by encouraging effort and holding students accountable to not only um. Behavior but academics as well, I think that we'll see our scores improve. Any questions?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
Your science is low, right? And science was lower in primary school, is that just because of the kids moving up? We're still behind in science, is it just kind of gonna go that way all the way through?
The thing about science is from what I know, most of it deals with comprehension of what they're reading, they're they're reading graphs and interpretive graphs. A lot of different areas, so that may tie into the reading comprehension as well. Uh, so you always keep that in mind when you're looking at science. And hopefully with the elementary school having a C, we hopefully. We'd be doing bad if we went down.
Right.
So that's, that's the goal for that as well. Thank you.
Okay, so um, Ms. Wolf, you know, the high school and we are um gonna finish this up with us. So I can get this to work. Mr. Blacknall, what did you do? Okay, all right, so um. At the high school, we've got about nineteen licensed staff, about four paraprofessionals who do so much, we could not. Function on a daily basis without the pairs that we have at the high school. Um, some other non-licensed, there's about six. Last year we were right about two ten, today we are at two oh nine, so we're hovering around that same number. We have shrunk, but we're, we're holding consistent right there. And you can see kind of the pattern here, ninth grade, you've got seventy one students, tenth grade, you've got fifty. Eleventh grade, you've got forty six, twelfth grade, you've got forty three. So you see those numbers decline and part of that is that you've got, again, students who are repeating ninth grade English. Students that are repeating Algebra One, they haven't earned enough credits to move on to the next grade. So it's not necessarily, there's that many more ninth graders, it's just that these other classes have lost a few. That are still being classified as ninth graders. Okay, as far as our demographics go, um, one of the big numbers that we are looking for that you won't see it until December. Our graduation rate is not available until that report card comes out in December. And the last couple of years, our graduation rate, again, like I told you at our committee meeting, is hovering around eighty six to eighty eight percent. So that's one of the big things that's, that's dinging us is our graduation rate. Student people ratio is very small, average class size, very small. That number comes down when you throw in all of the electives that have really small numbers because our core classes are fifteen to twenty kids. Our average years of teaching experiences is something else I brought up to you, is it right at five? So we've got a lot of young newer teachers, which is not a bad thing because they're completely coachable. And we can get them to be the teachers that we need them to be because they're young and they can do that, they're open to change. And there's, there it is, black and white, we are sitting at an F. That's just where we are. But as I have said repeatedly and they can tell you, this is my mantra at every faculty meeting, we've got no place to go but up. And I think we can, I have full faith that we can get these members up. Because we've got what we need, we've got teachers, we've got community support, we've got the things that we need. We just have to figure out how to make all of those parts work together. And if you look at all of the breakdowns, we are below the state average. Again, special ed is where we're closest. That's where we're closest to the state average. When you look at our aspire scores, you can see. Where those numbers really start to fall off. If you look at our math scores. The number of students that met benchmark or the percentage for ninth grade, six point nine percent met benchmark for math. And if you look at grade ten, four point three percent. So we know we've got to do something with math, we've got to get those scores up. So that's where we're looking at things like introducing small groups and that's something that secondary teachers don't do a lot of, that's something that's really. That elementary and the lower levels are more comfortable with that. With, when you get to secondary and you say small groups to teachers, they're thinking, oh, you've got groups working over here and I've. I've got to pay attention to what everybody's doing and work with these groups. That's something that we're working on getting some P D for our teachers so that they know how to effectively do that. We're working with the co-op to help our teachers get more comfortable. With those small groups and with the practices that they are going to need to help these students get to that benchmark level. English, just like you've seen with the others, the English benchmark is much higher. Science, it's low and I'll tell you one of the reasons that science is low, that's what we were talking about earlier. Science and social studies in the elementary level are not taught as content, they're taught as part of reading. You read a science passage for one of these standardized tests, you read something from history for one of these standardized tests. You're not reading it as content, it's not taught as content until they get into middle school. So they've got all of this vocabulary they're not really familiar with and now they're just starting to work with it, so they're kind of. I don't want to say they're behind with science, but it's not something that is prioritized at the lower levels, it's something that they just start to get as they get older. So, science numbers are low, but I will tell you, we've got. Some great things going on in science, you can come see the greenhouse or not the greenhouse, the outdoor classroom that they're working on building. And some experiments when Ms. Russell gets back, she's in some training with the military right now, but she's always doing. Different kinds of experiments in her physical science classes and her chemistry classes. Reading and that's the story, our reading level is not up to benchmark and we need to get it there. Because we have got sixty two percent of the ninth grade and seventy one percent of the tenth grade that are scoring in need of support on reading. And we have brought in. The specialist from Dawson to do those fluency tests to see where our kids are struggling and it's not that they can't read. It's that they don't understand what they're reading. They can read the words on page, that's not the problem, it's trying to get that comprehension. So now we are pushing for our teachers to increase the rigor to help get those kids up to grade level. Asking them to go deeper with their questioning, don't just ask what, but why and how. So asking those higher level questions to try to get them to think just a little bit deeper. The E L A scores, they're not quite up to benchmark, but when you look at E L A, you're looking at the combination of reading, writing and English. So you're pulling all of that together for that E L A score, so those reading benchmarks are really what's bringing that E L A down. And then when you get to high school, it's STEM and we can see. Our STEM benchmark is low because our kids don't have exposure to a lot of those things. So that's something else we're looking at and we need to be working on. Any questions so far? All right, so we do have some strengths that we are working from it and I'm not going to stand up here and paint a picture of gloom and doom. But I'm being realistic about this too, we do have some good things that we are using to try to fix these problems. We have an instructional facilitator and testing coordinator who is working in our classrooms regularly. She's going in, she's looking to see where those gaps are and she's coaching our teachers to help them. Figure out how to fill those gaps in their classrooms. We've got groups that are working to reestablish our community connections because COVID cost us a lot of community connections. People were kind of removed from the school, parents were removed from the school. We're trying to get that back, so bringing some of these programs to the community like East, I don't know if you saw. East was out just replacing signs around town, doing some things like that. Close up, we're trying to get close up going again. That's not been easy because it's been out for long enough that you don't have those kids that are coming back and talking about it and building it up. So we're having to try to rebuild it, that's, that's been kind of difficult and our student council is working on trying to make school. The culture of the school, more about school spirit, more about pride, more about those things that are going to make you want to come to school. Our leadership team, we're meeting monthly to talk about our progress and our challenges and the programs that we. Can institute going forward. We've got that twenty first century program, we're looking at using that. To try to help bridge the gap with some of these students who have lost credit and try to get them, those credits back without having to go to summer school. And without having to double up on their English and math so that they can take those electives. That we're seeing the numbers drop off in because they don't have a place for them in their schedule. So we're working on some of those things as well. And to address those weaknesses, we are using multiple assessments, we're using the classroom CFAs, those common formative assessments. We're using the A C T aspire, we're using the N W E A that we're doing coming up pretty soon. To try to get as much information as we can. To figure out where our kids really need that help, because if you go back and look at those numbers. We've got a significant portion in what we used to call the bubble, those bubble kids that are right there so close to being ready and what can we do to get them those three points? That are going to push them into ready. We're working on finding as much information as we can so that we can help those kids and pull those kids that are in need of support. Into at least the approaching readiness bubble that we have. Our co-op specialists are coming in, we're utilizing them to help with instruction, they're coming in and modeling lessons. They're coming in and talking to teachers and asking them what they need help with to try to get them where they need to be. And we are trying to develop some strategies to help our teachers, help our students, because that's what it's all about, is helping our students. Get to where they need to be. We've got great kids, we do, we've got great kids, they just need a push. And we've got great teachers and they need a push as well.
What are you doing with, you've got some classes that didn't make, what are you doing with those two?
Those teachers are being used to help, kind of, not really as paras, but they are kind of working as paras. We've got one business teacher who is really good at math and he's working in the geometry class with that geometry teacher to help them. So they're, they are all working somewhere. Everybody's doing something somewhere. Like I said, our paras. Are everywhere all the time, they, they don't get a rest.
Couple of things, number one. Absenteeism is a big problem. And also absenteeism with our staff is a big problem. And the reason, there's been so much sickness and I'll give you an example, somebody, teacher that has. Two or three kids, you know, one kid gets sick and the next week they get sick, next week, you know, and then they get sick and their husband. It just, it goes on, you know, it's going on forever with a lot of, you know, a lot of our staff and with our, with our kids. You know, the other thing is, is I'm not sure. You know, we're not sure how much effort was put into those tests in the past. And that's a big thing that, that, that the principals and teachers are, are, are really working at that. If we just make an effort on those tests, we probably will show better in some areas than, than what we are. So there's a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of effort going on by our teachers and by our staff. And uh, you know, our grades don't, like, over sixty percent of the scores in the state of Arkansas went down one grade level. This past year, so that's not an excuse, but I'm saying that we're not the Lone Ranger. And uh, and so we need to do better, but uh, uh, and, and I think that. We have the staff that can do that and, you know. They're working tremendous hours, they're with tremendous effort, so anyway, any questions or comments for any of that?
Ms. Blacknall, this, the standardized test and this has been going over the years, I remember doing it when I was a kid. Is, is there any work in the Department of Education to come up with a better way?
They come up with a different test over two or three years, okay?
But I mean, I, I, I remember, I'm a, I'm a C man, you know, I, if, if I, you know. It wasn't against your grade, so who cares, you know?
But when, uh, that's the whole idea, since now that it reflects to there. We need to get everything we can out of you because you may be a C person, but we want you to be a B person.
I don't really care, so I'm putting C, C for every one of them.
Need to fix.
And how do you fix that?
Well, you do that, like, what, what, go ahead, Charles.
So, we have a, uh, we have a group. But when our teachers are doing standardized testing, not only do I have incentives, I do the assembly. For time to pump them up, encourage them to take the test. We also have a, uh, effort rubric. That they'll have and they'll go by, make sure the students are on task. So on and so forth, make sure they're not speeding through the questions, make sure they're not sleeping, make sure they're not distracting others, making sure that that test is completely standardized. So we have that rubric and we hold them accountable to that. A student um gets all the points in that rubric, they will participate in the next incentive, that, that works for middle school and we've had good results with that. So I, I honestly think that with the last N W E A test that we took, I think that we had probably about ninety five percent. Give their best, what, what'd you say?
Well, with N W A two, it will stop the kid if they are guessing too much. They're going through it too fast and they're just guessing, it will stop their test. The teacher will have to restart it.
And it was, it was in an obligation that you have a, a guess or whatever, whatever property to let them know. So we didn't have a whole lot by doing that, now we had, we had a couple, but we didn't have a whole lot.
And what we're trying to do is teach them to make an effort everywhere they are, not just on that test. And that, that's, through the incentives and stuff is, is what they're trying to do, so I mean, they're. Are, you know, are we where we want to be? Absolutely not, but are we, are we making a concerted effort? To do better, I think that they're on a path and we got three young principals that, that get after it every day. Along with, you know, others that are out.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm reserving my opinion. Because I'm sitting here, we got, we got new people, but I'm looking at the amount of money we spent. On our staff, not to be here. And I'm, I'm just reserve my opinion because I'm looking at the new process, I'm looking at new people and. I'm just gonna reserve my opinion and see how it flows because.
I agree, I don't, I don't disagree.
We spent in the conversations we had about not getting here and that's why we spend this money doing this, 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 this. And preparing these people and every word we were giving was, give us tools for the tool chair, but we got two for the two chairs, so. I'm looking what's going on, just like I, I heard when she said. This, 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 but if we knew this, I'm not, I'm not dealing with it what they knew. But if we knew they didn't teach content and all that, why wasn't it addressed? So I'm, I'm holding my comment because we got new administrators here.
Correct.
And I, and we got new people doing different things, so. I'm hopeful.
Well.
I'm just a little frustrated, because I knew what we spent.
What, what you had to do is it, it goes from the top down and, and I'm not blaming the board, but I mean, but it goes from, from you to me. To, to the staff, to the principals and to the, to the teachers. And so what you had to do is you had to convince everybody that we're gonna be on the same page. And sometimes, and at this moment, not everybody's on the same page. And so we're working diligently to make sure that our umbrella is, is doing that and that's.
I've said this from day one.
Yeah.
When it came to teacher raises and it came everything, I'm, I say, I'm gonna be looking at what.
Right.
There's no secret to the people that's been here, I've been, I'm gonna be looking at what, those schools. But I'm looking at the protocols, I'm not, I'm just like, you know, as a board member, I'm a little frustrated here.
I, I don't disagree at all.
But I've said from day one, this is what I'm looking for.
And, but I don't disagree with one, but my observation probably when I got here. Is that everybody was working hard but working on their own, okay? And what happened has to happen, you have to have that same way, you gotta have it in a business or in a factory. You gotta have everybody working toward the same goal and, and in the, and my observation was is that. Not everybody was working toward the same goal and now. I believe that we're getting closer to that to where then we can do it. Absenteeism is a tough thing, kids and staff and you gotta have them here to teach and. You know, it's not their fault that they're not here, you know, some of them, I'm talking kid. You know, some of them, I'm talking about kids, but we've got to, we've got to encourage kids to be here. We've got to encourage. Everything we're doing and everybody needs to know that there's the game plan. And I believe you're getting close to that just by listening to what they say. They're talking about doing the same things and where their goals are and then holding themselves accountable. We need to, I need to hold them accountable. You need to hold them accountable to those test goers and where they are. From being at grade level. And we need to look at it, you know. At the end of the year or at the, you know, beginning of next year. And if they're not at that level, then we need to have an explaining to do. Okay?
How much the homeschool kids had, they don't take these tests, do they?
They, they can, but no, they don't.
So how much is that hurting us not having them in here?
Well.
Don't say this homeschool kid maybe or, you know, a little smaller, do a little bit better on the test. Not necessarily.
Not, well, i- i- in, in theory, you might say that, but not in reality, in Arkansas. It's some kids that are homeschooling or kids that don't need to be homeschooling. And, you know, they need to be in school. And sometimes they, you know, they show up in middle school and hadn't had the elementary. You know, but some of those really smart, bright kids also may be homeschooling. And they have the ability to do that and work self, you know, self-paced work. So. You know, not having them here means I don't have a larger pool to which to draw from, but.
Could hurt us, could have.
Yeah, 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 probably. Yeah.
When does the next report card come out? One year or two year?
Just next year.
Next year?
But you can bring them back in the spring and they ought to be able to tell you because they're testing during the year. And you bring them back in April, May, or whenever the last, when's the last set of testing? Anyway, they'll do their testing and you can bring them back in the spring and they ought to be able to show you with a lot of the, not.
Not ACTI, but the, the, the others.
And they can show you their growth or not, you know, where they're growing in a lot of areas. Alright, you all ready to move on? Uh, policy updates. Uh, you know, the business and financial management, does anybody have any questions about that? Do you have any, anybody? Anybody have any questions about any of those four? Instead of going through one another, one each time, you sure? You ready then probably entertain a motion?
Well, hold up.
Yeah.
I was reading, I'll read through some of them. It was some numbers missing. It was saying interject some numbers here, interject some numbers here. Did we interject those numbers?
I think we, I think like, if you show, tell us why it was, Jeremy. You know, but I think, I think we did interject some of those numbers while y'all were in the committee meeting, I think.
Yes.
In those blanks, correct?
Yes.
So we did that last week.
When I read it, did we interject those numbers?
They did.
I ain't want this to go forward, just saying, interject those numbers.
While we were discussing it last week, we, I think we covered all the blanks.
That would have made my notice. Did we interject those numbers?
We, we need to get those numbers to you, probably. Okay.
My only concern, I think that's okay for the number, for the number. So we did it. I was okay with, I, I was okay with all of them.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion to accept these updates?
Is that gonna, is, on seven point two three, is that gonna be with recommended optional one that they recommended? Is that, is that a part of, or does that need to be a part of the motion?
Yes, that's seven, seven point two three, Jeremy, was that one we left out, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's the one we left out last month.
Got rid of?
No, we didn't make a decision on, uh.
Not for this meeting.
Huh?
I would say it's not for this meeting.
Well, what happened, you talked about it last month and it was left. We didn't, you had to take option A or B. And though you, we didn't make a decision, so you did that last Tuesday night, right, Jeremy?
With optional one, correct?
Do what?
With optional one, correct? Yes, yes, okay.
We don't have any more question. We get a motion to update. Make a motion, we update. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion pass.
Uh, under personnel, we have uh, uh, four resignations. Uh, we just need to accept those or if you have any questions about them, you could ask, but.
I'm like, we accept their resignation that presented to us.
And we got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion. Say aye.
We thought, we, we thought we had a per, oh, I'm sorry.
All in dissent, same side. That motion pass.
We thought we had a professional hired for a special needs child, but. We're not a hundred percent sure, so we're gonna hold off till maybe in December. So uh, we do have a new student coming that's special needs student and. Do what?
We get that student semester.
No, we're gonna get her weeks Monday, we come back.
So we got somebody.
Yeah, we've gotta have somebody by the end. That, we were hoping this person would, but we haven't got confirmation, so. If, if, if we, what we will do is we will find somebody and we will put them to work. You know, as, you know, in subteach or somewhere, and then you can hire her retroactive to the day she starts. Okay? We need to set the December uh, board meeting, which I'd like to set it for December thirteenth, but you need to vote to do that.
Now I'm making a motion that we um, move the December meeting to December thirteenth at six P M.
Second motion. Alright, we have motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same side. That motion pass.
We, we won't have a committee meeting next month. We'll just go, I'm gonna miss the week before that. And so we won't have a committee meeting. We'll just, and it, and it most likely will not be a, we probably won't have the uh. PPCs next month. And we'll let, give them a break and uh, and so it probably will be not a real involved meeting. Okay? I say involve long, whatever. So, and, and then what I'll do is if there's any questions or concerns, I'll, I'll email those out in. The board minutes. Okay, I'm in the board packet. Okay, or talk to you individually if there's concern. Okay? Alright, executive session?
Yeah. I'm gonna say this, I wrote it down. I'm hopeful. I, I, I want to let y'all know, these are not y'all numbers. I'm no fool. I know these aren't y'all numbers. But I wanted to let them know, that's my sentiment. And I'm, I'm hopeful. That come next year, we get better numbers, better grades.
I agree.
I don't want nobody to leave on it. Because I know them when y'all numbers. I'm ready for the executive session.
Uh, you know. Some of us are tall, some of us are small, some of us are smart, some are less, not as smart. If you're the smartest person in the room or you're the tallest person in the room or the biggest person in the room, you can do almost anything. If you're smaller or shorter or not as smart, you just need to work harder. And that's where we are. We just need to work harder to do it and we need to get everybody, with everybody going in the same direction. So, uh, and I think, I think you've got the opportunity for that to happen and a lot of really good things happen.
I feel really better after our committee meeting last Tuesday. I, I, as a parent. As a school board member, as a person in the community, everything that the principal has presented to us and. The extra work that y'all are doing. It was a very informative meeting. And I, I, I really have a higher hope. It was really good, really good meeting.
We're now entering the executive session for personnel.